Hey, good evening. Good evening and welcome to the June 11th, 2019 Salem Kaiser School District School Board Meeting. We are going to reconvene our school board meeting and first thing we're going to do is we're going to call the attendance of the board. We do know that we have a couple absences this evening, so Director Lee is on the phone with us, I believe, and we also have Chair Goss who is on the phone, and then Director Jim Green is absent this evening. Okay, so I would ask that you please join me for first thing we're going to do is we are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, so I ask that you join me.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is Agenda Modifications, and for this evening, we do not have any Agenda Modifications, so we are going to move directly into our spotlights, and so Superintendent Perry and I will begin our spotlights.
It's great to see a full house on a warm sort of spring night. Our first spotlight will be presented by Lilly Engovas, our Director of Community Relations and Communications.
I am so excited tonight to bring forward Cobb Hudjohn, the owner of Make Me Tees, who was nominated by Principal Rachel Harms from Chapman Hill Elementary. If you'll please come forward and join the Superintendent and Vice Chair. Mr. Hudjohn, whose real name is Henry, is known as Cobb wherever he goes.
My surname is Henry. My real name is Jacob.
Oh. I'll start again. Mr. Hudjohn, whose real name is not Henry but is Jacob, is known as Cobb wherever he goes. He is an entrepreneur and owner/co-owner of several small businesses, including Make Me Tees, a Salem-based company that specializes in branding, custom design, and printing of T-shirts. Principal Harms says that when he was a child, Cobb was "that student every teacher dreads having in her class." Cobb says his sixth-grade teacher left the profession because of him. He was an unusual student who learned differently than other kids, which made a school struggle. Fast forward to today, and Cobb is now experiencing school anew through his son, a second grader at Chapman Hill Elementary. Nowadays, you can't keep him away from school. Cobb helped Chapman Hill research its original school colors and then redesigned the school logo as something attractive and modern. After that, he set up a webpage where anyone can order Chapman Hill school gear. 100% of the proceeds from sales go back to Chapman Hill Elementary. Principal Harms says Cobb has a special place in the heart of kids. Anytime there's something that might make a child feel different or unappreciated, he steps in. Recently, he had a pile of T-shirts left over from various projects, and he printed the Chapman Hill logo on them. Cobb delivered more than 50 T-shirts to the school and said he wanted them to go to students who needed them most, the ones who didn't have any spirit where. Principal Harms says it's unusual for someone who's had a bad experience of school growing up to make a 180-degree turn and focus on how he can make a school a positive experience for children. She appreciates that very much. Chapman Hill wants to thank Cobb Hudjohn for all he does, and we're pleased to recognize Make Me Tees as Salem Kaiser Public Schools Business Partner of the Month. Congratulations.
Next up, the meeting we've all been waiting for, our spotlights for our music competitions. So Mary Lou Boderman, Coordinator of District Music and Drama, if you'd please come forward to present our music competitor's spotlights.
It has been a stellar year for music in Salem Kaiser again. Throughout this academic year, we have seen and heard literally thousands of our students performing in over 300 concerts across the district, as well as competing for the state's highest honors, and for some of our students even performing on a national stage. Our high school musicians demonstrate a culmination of years of study and dedication to their art that began, for most of them, in an elementary music classroom right here in Salem Kaiser. Tonight, we celebrate our proud tradition of exceptional music education and highlight some of our most accomplished high school student musicians. First of all, we'll start with our competitions. Eleven groups from the district qualified to compete in the OMEA Small Ensemble State Competition. Nine of the 11 groups placed in the top three. So if there are any students that are here, please stand as you are acknowledged, and those students who finish first place, if you would come forward, please. So placing third in this competition, the McNary Trombone Trio, also the West Salem Trombone Quartet, and then placing second, the West Salem Marimba Trio, the West Salem Trombone Duet, the Spreg Piano Trio, and the West Salem Brass Quintet. And then placing first, and if there are these students, would you come forward, please? The South Salem String Octet. Have any students from South?
Thanks for being here.
Also placing first place was the West Salem Percussion Duet. Another first-place finish for West Salem, this was their Trumpet Ensemble, also placed first. The trumpet? The State Championships for solo music are awarded to individual students. The district qualified 35 students to compete at state, and 23 students, representing all five of our high schools, or five of our high schools, placed in the top five. The following seven were named as champions this year. From South Salem High School, Israel Perez on flute; Casey Whitfield on horn from McNary; Anthony Bolden, low saxophone from West Salem; on mallets, Logan Kraus from West Salem; orchestral snare, Dylan Leonson-Yount from West; soprano voice, Ellie De Loretto from Spreg; and on trombone, Ned Harlan from South Salem. If any of those students are here, if you would come forward. Many of them are seniors, and I believe they have gotten out of town. Salem Kaiser did well again this year in the OSAA Large Group Music Championships. North Salem High School competed for the first time in the 5A classification. Both the North Choir and Band qualified for state, and the Viking Band, under the direction of Brian Bell, came home with a third-place trophy. North Salem, you are here. out of the 20 total trophies that were awarded, 13 went to Salem Kaiser. Here are the results. For the 6A Choir Championships, in fourth place, Spreg High School, directed by Dr. David Brown; second place, West Salem High School, directed by Kimberly McConnell; and the state champion, South Salem High School, directed by Will McLean. and Lisa Hanson; third place, South Salem High School, directed by Ben Stokes and Damion Burdacken; and first place, for the sixth year in a row, West Salem High School, directed by Todd Zimmelman and George Thompson. I am told I have made a mistake. Fourth place was South Salem; third place was Spreg. second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West second place, McNary High School, directed by Christopher Nelson; and first place, West West still gets to stay in first, but you know, with so many things to keep track of, Salem, directed by Todd Zimmelman. 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 Salem, directed by Todd Zimmelman.[712.12] it's so difficult. My apologies. In the String Division, fifth place, McKay High School, directed by Jim Charnholm. Fourth place, Spreg High School, directed by Lisa Hanson; and first place, South Salem, directed by Damion Burdacken.
Now Laura might be a little confused because she won the award in 1998 as a classroom teacher, but this year it's for her role in curriculum. And I'm going to read to you the letter of nomination that I got for Laura. Laura is deserving of the award for her tireless efforts to bring more math to more people in her school district, the region, the state, and nationally. Laura has served full-time as the Salem Kaiser Public Schools Secondary Math Curriculum Specialist for over 10 years, and in that time has led the district through multiple math curriculum adoptions, instructional improvement efforts, and the implementation of many effective Tier One and Tier Two intervention efforts. Her work to deconstruct and align common district assessments to the Common Core State standards has contributed to Salem Kaiser students scoring above the state average in math achievement on the state math assessment at both the middle and high school levels for multiple years. From leading professional development for district math teachers, supporting the implementation of Math 180 interventions at the middle school level, to organizing the regional math competitions for middle and high school students, her work is energizing and equipping the teaching and learning of mathematics at a very high level in Salem Kaiser. That her work spans an even larger area and has influenced beyond her district. On her own, she has organized a bi-monthly meeting of state math coaches, coordinators, curriculum specialists, and directors to share ideas, tackle challenges that confront the math education community, and spur forward collaborative thinking in the state. She also serves as the Regional Director for the State of Oregon for the CPM Education Program, a nonprofit curriculum and professional development organization whose mission is to bring student-centered, problem-based learning and ambitious teaching to secondary classrooms. In that role, she visits schools in the area to provide coaching on instructional implementation, organizes regional professional development, and works with building leaders to equip teachers in this approach to instruction. She has been asked to speak regularly at a national conference on effective assessment practices, and in that arena has contributed to teacher practice around the nation. In short, Laura is making an incredibly positive difference in math education. Congratulations. [applause] So can any of the math teachers in the room come join us? Oh, nice. Yeah. So happy to be in a picture. And let's give the math teachers in the room a big round of applause. All right, we're going to change it up just a little bit. I wish I could be speaking to like a TV screen with Chuck and Jim on it. I'm hoping that Chuck is still listening and that Jim is watching in for this since it's their last board meeting. I also have a couple members of the audience that have signed up to give comments about our outgoing directors, so if they were signed up for comments about our outgoing directors, if you want to come forward and I'll... You get to stand behind me. Come on. And then I'm going to modify mine and make my comments short because I'm not 100% sure what Nancy's going to say and I might have taken her words. So we're going to start with Director Green. I'll go through both and then I'll let you each do comments. So Jim Green was elected eight years ago after having served on the district's Budget Committee for four years. He chaired that committee for two years, and we've been so grateful to have him serve as Vice Chair for our current Budget Committee. He's also had time as Chair. He also was the Chair when he hired me. He serves as the Executive Director of Oregon School Boards Association, and his departure from the Board, we will miss his technical expertise, his wisdom around complicated issues, his ability to make bold decisions in the boardroom, never afraid to speak up, and just always has such reverence for the boardroom and the process. He's been a great leader for me and also a great mentor. He... Congratulations are also in order for Jim because his son Reese was one of the hundreds of graduates, Boys on the Birm is his group's name, for the spread class of 2019. And it was sure fun to be with him at graduation on Friday night. So thank you, Jim, to your years of service. And it's safe to say, as I move on to Director Chuck Lee, that Salem Kaiser Schools would look very, very different without Director Lee. He's been the Kaiser representative on the Kaiser-Salem Public Schools Board of Directors for 12 years, and he has this distinction of supporting the work of two record-breaking bond measures. The first one, one of the largest in the state. Certainly Director Lee's legacy project is the shining facility on Portland Road, CTEC. Thanks to his persistence and ingenuity, Director Lee laid out a plan for a center that would prepare students for jobs after high school. Its integrated approach, teaching language arts and math related to the CTE programs, gave all students the opportunity for success in high school. CTEC continues to grow, students are thriving, 98% of the students who attend CTEC graduate on time. Great thanks to Director Lee for his vision, passion, tenacity. Remember the MOU he worked on with the Board for time after time. You remember that, right, Mr. DiCapolis? So Director Lee and his wife Karina are to be celebrated for their decades of service to the Salem and Kaiser communities. We will miss not only Chuck but Karina. We know this isn't the last we will see of them because they will be having passionate pursuits, making the world better for kids because that's what they do. So thank you to Director Lee and also to Karina. We will sure miss you, but no, we will see you on other projects. And with that, I want to turn it over to public comment on these two fine individuals.
Hi, for the record, I'm Nancy McMorris-Odicks. I live at 445 Candlearia Boulevard South. And I'm here to just honor the time served by Chuck and Jim. When I came onto School Board, Chuck was... Jim was the Budget Committee Chair, and I thought, wow, this man is incredibly smart and incredibly well-informed and led us through that process. I believe... I know that Jim was the Chair when we did the Superintendent search, and I'm pretty sure Chuck was the Vice Chair. And for any of you that don't remember, we did the search twice because we didn't like the group of candidates we had the first time. So it was not... It wasn't like a straightforward, rapid kind of deal. Took us a long time, and it was led very well by those two. For me, I think it was an incredible honor to serve with both of these men. They always helped us focus on what was best for kids, and I hope that that's their enduring legacy to this group. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Tyler Skelll-Lakeberg, and I reside in Salem. I am the Vice President for the Salem Kaiser Education Association, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my 2,300 members. And we want to say on behalf of SKEA, thank you so much for the Board in its entirety for the service, but especially Director Lee and Director Jim, over decades of service commitment. We want to thank you for the opportunities you've created for our students, for the speaking up for equity, and for doing what's right, and the leadership you've provided over these years. So we wish the best to them in their next adventure, whatever that might be, and thank you again for everyone's service, and we look forward to welcoming our new Board members and working with them in the upcoming years. So thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rita Glass, the SKEA president, the Association of Salem Kaiser Educational Support Professionals, and I too want to thank all of you for your service, and also especially to Director Lee and Director Green for their... We've had many, many difficult discussions during their leadership here in this boardroom, budget cuts, and all kinds of different, really hard discussions, and they had always been the ones to be at the forefront of some of those discussions, and especially around diversity and equity. I applaud the Board for taking that much-needed step in making sure that we look through everything with an equity lens. And I also really appreciate all the support that you all, and both Director Lee and Green have provided, especially to our support professionals in Salem Kaiser School District, and for always having the best interest of our students in every decision that they would make. I also want to say it's going to be really hard because I have always said that Jim Green has that radio voice, and you know, when I'm in the back nodding off on some of these agenda items and he speaks, I was like, oh, yeah. So we will miss those strong voices on this table, so you all have to take that over for them. But just... And also, Mr. Green, I'm convinced that you convinced Mary Paulson to leave us. So I don't know if I'll... We'll get over that one, but we really enjoy... I see them both out in community events promoting Salem Kaiser School District and trying to get better funding from the state for our schools. So thank you very much for all... For your years of service, and you will be missed, and come and join us in the board meetings. Thank you.
I'm Rick Kimball. I live in Salem, Oregon. I signed up to talk about Agenda Item 7G so I could get up here. I didn't know there was going to be an easy pass to get up here and talk. And 7G is the School Board election that just happened. I always find it ironic that we would sit up there... I was a former School Board member 12 years, and vote on the election results that we might have been involved in. I think you could approve him. I don't think any foreign government got involved in our election, and it should be okay when you get to that item. But on a serious note, Jim and Chuck. You know, I served on the Board for 12 years, served with Chuck for 10 and Jim for 6, and I really enjoyed the time with them. They were good student advocates on the Board. They followed the community's wishes as best they could in making decisions for all 40-plus thousand kids. They did a great job. Some of the notes I had have already been covered. Yes, Chuck and Jim were the leadership team that when they signed on to be Chair and Vice Chair that year, they didn't know what year... What was going to happen that year? Dr. Husk left us, and they had to conduct a search with the Board. And through that search, we found Superintendent Perry. So I commend them on the process that they conducted and the thing that we achieved through that process. Jim, and this is one thing I haven't heard yet, Jim was the Budget Chair. And Jim was the Budget Chair on the rough year, the year where we cut 54 million. If Jim was here, he'd tell me the number. It could have even been higher than that. It was a pretty high number that year. We closed small schools, we cut librarians, and you know, we did some things that were very unpleasant because there was a need for reductions. At the May 4th meeting in 2011, I looked this up, so this is accurate, Budget Committee Member Michael Bufalino made a motion that the Budget Committee take a look at cutting athletics in the budget to save money. The Committee passed that motion. At the next meeting, a week later, Jim Green ran a meeting with 800 people in the room? Something like that? It turned out the community, the subject of athletics. And Jim ran a solid meeting, just like he always did. So Jim, you were a good leader through a lot of tough times. As far as Chuck is concerned, Chuck was always good at bringing the Board back to focus on topics. He would say what was needed at the time to get us back into the topic we were working on, and more often than not, he did that during our closed sessions when we're talking about student expulsions. I can't say anything more about them because they're closed sessions, but Chuck was really good at taking us back to the topic about the student and what's best for the student. So Chuck, thank you for that. Now, they're retiring after 12 years and eight years, and I know they're going to have a hard time not coming back down here. You know, I've been down here every day since I retired, right? This would be better if they were here. My guidance to Chuck and Jim is take your placard with you and put it somewhere at home where you can sit behind it, and on the first Tuesday of every month, sit behind it and stay home, okay? Don't come down here. Thank you, Chuck and Jim.
Sorry, we have one more spotlight, and that's our SEDEXO Scholarship presentation. And so if I could invite SEDEXO forward, that would be great.
Good evening, and we'd like to thank the Board for giving us a few minutes of your time this evening. And I'd like to introduce Nancy Sattledge. She's the Assistant General Manager and Director of Operations for SEDEXO. And I'm Mac Larry, and I'm the General Manager with SEDEXO. And we're here this evening to... On behalf of SEDEXO, to show our appreciation for the long relationship and partnership between SEDEXO and the school district. And to demonstrate that appreciation, we'd like to donate a check for $7,000 that will go to scholarships for graduating deserving seniors. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, so thank you so much, and thank you for those who came to speak about our outgoing Board members. We obviously echo your sentiments, so thank you so much for being here. So we are going to move on, and tonight's agenda is a little different in the sense that we have a few different opportunities for public comment. So I just wanted to let folks know that our first opportunity for public comment is going to be for our next item, and that is with regards to our 2019-20 budget hearing. So we will allow for public comment specific to the budget. And then as we move on through the agenda items, we will also have opportunity for public comment around action items. And then at the end of the meeting, we will have an opportunity for public comment for any items that were not an agenda item. So we just wanted to kind of clarify that. So we are going to move into a... I'm going to open a hearing for the 2019-20 budget.
Yeah, and I'll just do a couple comments. So just as kind of a reorientation to where we are, you heard the Superintendent's Budget Message presented to the Budget Committee on April 23rd, 2019. I came back to you with revisions to the budget because of additional revenue, both on May 7th and May 20th. The Budget Committee took public comment April 30, May 7th, May 20th, and then they approved the budget with the modifications the Superintendent proposed on that May 20th meeting. This June 11th meeting fulfills the legal requirement to receive testimony on the approved budget. In your packet, you have two separate resolutions because I can't modify the budget any longer because the Budget Committee has approved it. So you are the only people that can modify the budget. We are recommending a modification to the budget because we are... It's our current understanding that we will have about a full funding of Measure 98 in the first year of the biennium, and we did not budget for that appropriately because at that time of the budget approval, I think we were expecting about 60%. We don't have final allocations, but we've given you a separate resolution. So you have two. Resolution A is the one that was the one the Budget Committee approved. Resolution B is the one with the addition to the grant funds of $5 million. It will allow us to receive those funds and expend any additional funds. So that's what you'll have as an action item after we close the budget hearing. I was looking at the summary of FTE tonight, and just to kind of get us back up to speed, there was a total of 144.53 additional FTE in the proposed budget. A good share of that was in classified employees, especially the conversion of limited term to permanent special ed IAs in the special ed budget. And then remember, there was a large number of embedded cadre, so we have more embedded cadre support at elementary, then roving support of behavior cadre at middle and high, and then about 32 additional licensed positions as well. I've not made any changes. I'm not making any recommended changes, other than I'm recommending to you the approval of the additional $5 million in grant... In the grant fund. So with that, I think we should turn it over to public comment.
Okay. And so just for the Board's reminder, we will have this as an action item later in the meeting. So we do have two individuals that are signed up for public comment with regards to the budget. And so just as a reminder, when you come to the podium, please state your name, your city of residence, and the agenda item, in this case would be the budget. And please remember that each speaker has three minutes, and the timer will beep when that three minutes is up. We also are going to allow additional time for those individuals using translation. And so we'll go ahead and call up the first individual, Mariano Horta, if you'd please come to the podium.
Muy buenas noches, Superintendent Christie Perry. Miembros del gabinete y miembros de la mesa directiva de nuestras escuelas de Salem Kaiser. Mi nombre es Mariano Horta, uno de los dos portavoces del comité de liderazgo de padres y madres de la coalición para la igualdad de Salem Kaiser. Mi residencia está en el 3109 Wooddeau Avenue Northeast, Salem, Oregon 97301. El comité de liderazgo de la coalición para la igualdad de Salem Kaiser se fundamentó este pasado mes de mayo a raíz de la revisión de la gran necesidad histórica de mejorar nuestras escuelas locales para que nos ayuden a educar a nuestros niños, niñas, y jovencitos latinos. Este pasado mes de abril, el director del departamento de recursos humanos de nuestras escuelas dio una presentación acerca del porcentaje de maestros bilingües que tenemos. En esa presentación, nos recordó que todo el trabajo que todavía falta por hacerse en nuestro distrito escolar para alcanzar la paridad entre el porcentaje de maestros bilingües. 8% o 214 maestros de un total de 2,512 maestros. Y el porcentaje de estudiantes latinos que tenemos actualmente, 40% o casi 17,000 estudiantes. Todos los padres y madres, miembros del comité de liderazgo de la coalición para la igualdad, somos conscientes que las necesidades que tenemos en nuestras escuelas son muchas. Queremos seguir siendo parte de la solución para ayudar a nuestros hijos apoyando nuestras escuelas. Entre el final del mes de marzo hasta finales de mayo hemos venido entrenándonos para poder ayudar más efectivamente. Juntos hemos venido analizando y evaluando cuáles son las principales prioridades que tenemos en nuestras escuelas, y las hemos categorizado desde la más importante hasta la de menos importancia para nosotros, los padres y madres latinos. Mi compañera, la señora Montserrat Zuniga, les explicará más en su testimonio a continuación. Gracias.
I'm going to read it in English. Good evening, Superintendent Christie Perry, members of Cabinet and members of the Salem Kaiser School Board. My name is Mariano Horta, one of the spokespersons of the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality's Leadership Committee of Fathers and Mothers. My residence is in Salem, Oregon, Wooddeau Avenue Northeast. The Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality's Leadership Committee of Fathers and Mothers was created this past month of May after reviewing the historical need to better our local schools to educate our Latino boys and girls and our teenagers. This past month of April, the Director of the Department of Human Resources of our schools gave a presentation that included the number of bilingual teachers we currently have. That presentation reminded us of all the work we still need to do in our school district to reach the parity between the percentages of the bilingual teachers who we currently have. 8% or 214 of 2,514 teachers compared to the 40% of Latino students, which is almost 17,000. All the Fathers and Mothers, members of the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality Leadership Committee, are very conscious... Conscientious of all the needs we have in our school. We want to continue being part of the solution to help our children by supporting our schools. Between the months of March and the end of May, we have been receiving trainings to be more effective at helping you. Together, we have analyzed and evaluated which are the most important priorities to work in our schools, and we have categorized them from the most important to the least important for us Latino Fathers and Mothers. My partner, Mrs. Montserrat Zuniga, will explain more in her testimony.
Muy buenas noches, Superintendent Christie Perry. Miembros del gabinete y miembros de la mesa directiva de nuestras escuelas en Salem Kaiser. Mi nombre es Montserrat Zuniga, uno de los dos portavoces del comité de liderazgo de padres y madres de la coalición para la igualdad de Salem Kaiser. Mi residencia está en 4525 Swallow Court Northeast in Salem, Oregon. Las prioridades para los padres y madres del comité de liderazgo de la coalición para la igualdad de Salem Kaiser son las siguientes. Número uno, disciplina y seguridad y bullying, o sea, acoso escolar. Más apoyo a los niños que se porten mal, más autoridad a maestros con la disciplina, inculcar uniformes y eliminar los celulares. Número dos, más apoyo al involucramiento de padres y madres. ¿Cómo proponen los líderes del distrito escolar que este se lleve a cabo? Queremos que se nos tenga en cuenta cuando se planifique y se tome la decisión final de las estrategias para ofrecer más apoyo al involucramiento de los padres y madres. Número tres, más maestros bilingües y multiculturales. Número cuatro, apoyo de la salud mental y reducir el número de niños por clase. Número cinco, programas motivadores y enseñanza de la moral y la ética, programas específicos para adolescentes. Número seis, mejor diálogo entre maestros y estudiantes. Pregunta importante de los padres y madres líderes. ¿Cómo proponen los líderes del distrito escolar de Salem Kaiser que estas prioridades sean implementadas en todas las escuelas? Queremos que se nos tenga en cuenta cuando se planifique, discuta, y se tome la decisión final de las estrategias a seguir para solucionar las problemáticas aquí presentadas por los padres y madres de la coalición. Queremos que estas prioridades de los padres y madres de la coalición sean vistas e implementadas con el lente de, y cuidad, equity lens. Aprobado por esta mesa directiva ya hace... Ya unos años atrás. Todos nosotros, los padres y madres líderes de comité de liderazgo de la coalición para la igualdad de Salem Kaiser, estamos dispuestos y comprometidos a ser parte de la solución para la educación de todos los niños, niñas, y jóvenes del distrito escolar de Salem Kaiser. Muchas gracias por su atención y esperamos sus prontas respuestas a nuestras prioridades como padres y madres.
My name is Montserrat Zuniga, one of the... Her name is Montserrat Zuniga, one of the spokespersons of the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality's Leadership Committee of Fathers and Mothers. My residence is 4525 Swallow Court Northeast, Salem, Oregon. The Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality Leadership Committee of Fathers and Mothers priorities are as follow. This was a survey conducted between end of March, April, and May of 2019. Number one, discipline, security, and bullying. More support to the children and youth who misbehave, more authority to teachers with the discipline, institute uniforms, and eliminate cell phones. Number two, more support for involvement of fathers and mothers. How are the leaders of our school district proposing that these become a reality? We want to be considered and being part of the We want to be considered and being part of the development of the decision-making processes and the final decision of the strategies to offer more support to the involvement of fathers and mothers. Number three, more bilingual and bicultural teachers. Number four, support for mental health, reduce the number of children per class. Number five, motivational programs and teachings of morals and ethics. Specific programs for teenagers. Number six, better dialogue between teachers and students. Important questions from the fathers and mothers. How are the leaders of the Salem Kaiser School District proposing that these priorities are implemented in all schools? We want to be, we want to be taken into consideration when the planning, discussions and the final decisions are taken regarding the strategies selected to solve the problems, the problems presented to you today by the fathers and mothers of the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality. We want these priorities for the fathers and mothers of the coalition to be viewed and implemented with the equity lens approved by the school board a few years back. All the fathers and mothers, leaders of the leadership committee of the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality are ready and committed to be part of the solution to educate all children and youth of our Salem Kaiser School District. Thank you for your attention and we wait for your prompt response to our priorities as fathers and mothers.
Thank you very much. Hey Director Cobb, would you get pictures of their signs for us? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So that concludes the public testimony for the 2019-20 budget. So I'm going to close the public hearing and then open public comment for other agenda items. Thank you. And some of the individuals may have already spoke earlier with regards to Director Green and Director Lee, who are on the list, but, so I'll call your name and you can come up to the podium. And as we mentioned before, you'll have three minutes to, to address the board and then we'll call up the next individual. And again, these are for agenda items. So the first individual, I think Rita, did you, did Rita leave? Did you want, Rita? Okay, thank you.
Good evening Vice Chair Blasi, Superintendent Perry and members of the school board. Again, my name is Rita Glass, I'm the ASK ESP president. This evening I am speaking on agenda item number seven A, the LGBTQ Pride Month Proclamation. I applaud this board for taking the step in recognizing the diversity of our districts, both students and staff. And under this board's leadership, it has been the first year that we have, that you have proclaimed many months to recognizing our diverse groups that this school district serves. So I thank you for that as we continue to move along this path in recognizing the LGBTQ community and assuring that all students, staff and community members who enter our school buildings feel safe, included and a part of our community. So again, I thank you and I urge you to, to adopt the proclamation in announcing and proclaiming June 2019 as LGBTQ Pride Month. Thank you very much.
Thank you Rita. So next up we have Laura Danner.
Hi, my name's Laura Danner, I'm from Kaiser, Oregon. I'm here to talk about the pride proclamation. I'm a parent of a student at McNary. I have two down and one to go as of Friday. My transgender son has been told by friends and family that it's okay to be gay, transgender, just don't flaunt it. Don't have it wave the rainbow around because people will think you're shoving it in their faces. Try to blend, don't make yourself a target, keep it private. But our children need a better message than that. Honoring Pride Month is honoring our children just the way they are. Yes, you can be yourself, you're accepted, not just tolerated, you don't need to hide. LGBTQ youth who are rejected by family are over eight times more likely to attempt suicide as their LGBT peers who are not rejected by family. Sadly, there are many students for whom school is their only safe place to be themselves. Proclaiming Pride Month for Salem Kaiser Schools is a message of acceptance and inclusivity. Please proclaim June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month for Salem Kaiser Schools. Let all our students know that they, that you have their back and that they can be strong and proud of who they are. And I do have another statement from another parent, if that's okay. It's from Katie O'Neil, she's a South Salem parent. She says, "As a proud parent of three as of this weekend, South Salem High graduates, I want to give my full support to the Salem Kaiser School District Proclamation of June 2019 as LGBTQIA plus Pride Month. Two of my three children are members of this community, one is pansexual, one is non-binary. The support and love they received as students at J-Gems and at South Salem High School was invaluable. My children have grown into amazing young adults, full of life and proud of who they are. As students, my kids spent time as members and leaders of the Gay Straight Alliance, the GSA, at South. They listened to too many heartbreaking stories of friends who did not have support at home, who weren't able to be their true selves. The GSA meetings gave these students a safe space. Every child in Salem Kaiser deserves a safe space. Every child deserves the freedom to be who they are, to love who they love, to have support from their friends, family, community, schools and, yes, the school district. You can save lives with the simple act of proclaiming June 2019 the LGBTQIA plus Pride Month. Give these amazing students a chance to be free and know that they are loved and supported by their school district." Thank you.
So next we have Jordan Danner.
Good evening, I am Jordan Danner and I live in Kaiser. I'm here to speak on the Pride Month Proclamation. I'm a student at McNary High School who's bisexual and transgender. This proclamation greatly affects me and my fellow LGBTQ plus students in the Salem Kaiser School District and I implore you to approve it. Through my years at McNary, I've discovered several specific safe spaces in my school. My school's theater, as well as my English teacher's classroom are a few of these places. To me, this pride proclamation would help me to feel like my entire school is a safe space. School is about education first and foremost and a Pride Month proclamation allows an organic opportunity to educate students on a growing group of diverse peoples. Thank you for letting this conversation occur and thank you for allowing it to continue.
Thank you, Jordan. Up next is Benjamin Reyes.
Good evening, my name is Benjamin Reyes and I reside here in Salem, Oregon. I am a first-year teacher and I have seen firsthand the importance of acknowledging multiculturalism, particularly in the LGBTQIA plus community. In my classroom, I provide students, I provide and promote tolerance, respect and diversity. And I know that that makes a difference in a child's life. I provide a safe environment for all my students in which they can be themselves. All students need to know they are loved and they need to have a sense of belonging. Todos los estudiantes necesitan saber que los queremos tal y como son. Y necesitan una voz que los defienda sus derechos. This is something that is impacting our students and our community and we cannot ignore it. Thank you.
Thank you Benjamin. Up next we have Daniel Rawlings.
Good evening Superintendent Perry, board members. My name is Daniel Rawlings, I'm a member of Salem Kaiser's community. As a taxpayer, a property owner, a voter, a volunteer in your school district and someday a parent of a child in Salem Kaiser Schools, I want to encourage you, the board, to vote to approve the pride proclamation. As a former school board member myself and a queer man, this type of affirming awareness is vital to some of our most at-risk and bullied kids in the schools. All children deserve to be acknowledged, loved for who they are and given a safe place to learn. This proclamation, just like the one the city council passed last night, makes a distinct point in recognizing that Salem Kaiser community has a vibrant and active LGBTQI plus community. We are your parents of your children, the students in your elementary, voters in your elections, teachers in your schools. So on behalf of PFLAG, I thank you for the recognition of pride and for taking up this proclamation.
Okay, up next is Cara Leann. I apologize now, Triasario, I'm sorry.
Tricarico, I just go by my last name, Tricarico. I'm a Salem homeowner, I work in Salem, I vote in Salem, I volunteer. I have a support group for gender non-conforming folks. I didn't have the language to describe who I was until I was around other queer people and I wonder if that is a reality for many students in the district as well. It could be even more challenging for those who are of other oppressed groups and it is so important that we support them by proclaiming Pride Month. Pride acknowledges and celebrates people who can be put to death in ten countries, thrown in jail in seventy-two and legally discriminated against in over twenty states. Pride sends the opposite message to the LGBTQIA plus community. You are valid, you are loved and you matter. You do not have to agree with them to tell them these things and see their humanity. With the rising number of suicides and hate crimes affecting LGBTQIA folks, I would hope that the Salem Kaiser School District would take the opportunity to send a message of love and support and not stand in silence on the side of hate and violence. Thank you.
Up next is Eric Howe, Howard, Howell, sorry.
Good evening, my name is Eric Howell, my pronouns are he/him and I live in Kaiser. Good evening Superintendent Perry, members of the administration and members old and new to the Salem Kaiser School Board who I hope are watching tonight if they're not here. The McNary High School Gay Straight Alliance wanted to be here tonight to urge a yes vote on this month's pride proclamation. I am a Salem Kaiser parent and I am also the volunteer advisor to the McNary GSA and I'm here to speak about the necessity of the proposed pride proclamation and any other efforts you are willing to make on the part of LGBTQ plus students. The McNary GSA started anew this year after its previous efforts stalled out. But I can tell you from experience with, after working with students in another club at McNary, it was no less needed. Since October, the GSA has been busy. We developed a presentation for the entire faculty on the importance of not misgendering our trans students and respecting identity issues as a whole. We made and donated birthday and comfort cards for LGBTQ plus students to the school's counseling department. And members of our club participated in PFLAG's Transgender Day of Visibility as panelists. And we hosted, and finally, we hosted a full day of youth-themed LGBTQ plus movies for anyone in Salem Kaiser's middle and high schools. It's the last event I want to speak a little bit more about tonight. After three movies during our festival, something unexpected and magical happened. It might be blamed on the soft drinks, popcorn and thousands upon thousands of empty calories down to that point, but I prefer to think it was because we created a space for it to happen. It started with one of our club members needing a break and more than a dozen students joining her in the stairwell, where we all talked for more than ninety minutes about movies, music, Dungeons and Dragons and all the things that make people human regardless of their identity. But they were also free to talk about identity issues and questions without fear of judgment. That may seem like a small thing, but I assure you that it wasn't. I'm certain those moments didn't happen by accident, even if it was just the sugar talking. It happened because adults took the time and made the effort to support their students. The students saw what was happening and made the most of it. During then and after the movie festival, more than one student commented on how those minutes on the stairs were some of the best of our year together. I could not agree more and I wish I could capture lightning in bottles. That might seem like puffery, so I bring data with me. The very existence of GSAs in schools has had a quantifiable effect on school culture and student mental health. The University of British Columbia is leading the way on these studies and I encourage you to check their website, but this is what they've found so far. The longer GSAs and anti-homophobic policies are in place at a school, the safer all students on campus feel. For students with GSAs on campus at least three years, binge drinking was reduced for all students. Decreases were from, anywhere from twenty to sixty percent depending on the specific population. And in schools with GSAs for more than three years, thoughts of suicide were reduced across the student body for all, across the student body. I'll be done in just one second. For LGBTQ plus students experienced a larger reduction, but suicide rates for all students decreased by more than fifty percent. Despite these beneficial effects, I am only aware of two GSAs in Salem Kaiser's high schools and none in our middle schools. It would be easy for everyone in this room, those watching at home or online, to see a Pride Month declaration as a point of arrival. But the McNary GSA would rather you see this as a beginning of a much longer journey. More is needed and the McNary GSA would be glad to point you in the right direction. But until every hallway in every Salem Kaiser school is a safe place for any minority population to have conversations similar to the ones we had during the film festival, we cannot and should not rest. The McNary GSA and I thank you for considering this proclamation and we want your yes votes, but we urge you to do more. Establishing GSAs in every school should be a priority when it comes to addressing mental health throughout this district. There is good work to be done in this area. In my experience, the students are more than willing to do it. But as the adults in this community, we need to let them, it's okay, let them know it's okay to begin. Thank you.
Thank you Eric. And, whoops, we have one more. Up next is Yadira Juarez.
Good evening Superintendent Christie Perry, cabinet members and school board members of our Salem Kaiser schools. My name is Yadira and I live in Salem. I'm here tonight to support my college from that coalition and their message. We are asking for more parent participation in schools, more bilingual teachers who represent our students and more mental health support in our schools. At the same time, I want to congratulate the superintendent and the board as this year we have seen a change, change in the administration structure. Mr. Craig Sprouls has been in charge of curriculum and academic improvement in the elementary school and our students have benefited from this experience and knowledge. Mr. Sprouls gave a presentation to the board this past fall and there are notice that he is a person who values our rich culture and understands the need to continue implementing bilingual programs. I also had the pleasure to work with him on the boundary change committee and I saw firsthand his passion to help us make yes decisions and use an equal lens. We are hoping to continue to work with Mr. Sprouls with his role as the right hand or assistant to the superintendent for all elementary schools at first. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Javier.
Good evening Superintendent Perry, cabinet members and school board members of our Salem Kaiser schools. My name is Javier Quiroz and I live in Salem. Just, just like my colleague Yadira, I'm here to support my colleagues from this coalition and their message, and the message. And I ask you that in every budget decision you keep, in every, in every budget decision you keep your promise of equity and inclusion. We want to see every student in Salem Kaiser be successful and that is in your hands. During the last few months, we have heard reports with the graduation percentages and goals to improve graduation percentage, percentage of students of color in Salem Kaiser schools. I have I have noticed a greater specific focus in this work, and I want to thank, thank Mrs. Linda Myers, because I know she coordinates and supervises all the middle, middle and high schools affairs. The decision to have two bosses who are, who answer directly to a superintendent for every, for everything that happens in the primary and secondary education, education was a very wise decision and should continue. Our students deserve a structured administration that keeps important data to implement, to implement goals that, that help, that help them be successful. We have heard these positions are not permanent, and we want to ask you respectfully that Mrs. Spouse and Mrs. Myers be the right hand, the assistant to the superintendent for all primary and secondary affairs. Thank you.
So next on the agenda, we are going to move into the action items, and so Action Item 7A is the, okay, but before we, I just want to verify that both Chuck and Kathy are still on the line. So Chuck, Lee, and Kathy Goss, I just want to verify you're still there as we move into the action items.
Director Lee? Director Goss?
President.
Thank you.
Director Lee?
Okay, so Kathy, we heard you. You can put yours back on mute. Thank you.
Sharon, did you hear me?
Okay, thank you. We just heard you. Thank you so much, Chuck. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. So did I hear a motion for?
Yes, so I move item 7A for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Before we have discussion or a vote, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas Salem-Kaiser Public Schools shares the belief that diversity is our greatest strength, and whereas our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer students and staff have the same rights guaranteed to their peers, and whereas each year, the month of June honors the nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall riots in Manhattan, and whereas the National Education Association has included Pride Month in its list of commemorative months since nineteen ninety-five, and whereas LGBTQ youth are almost five times as likely to have attempted suicide compared to straight youth, and whereas we believe, like Jason Collins, the first openly gay major American sports athlete said, openness may not completely disarm prejudice, but it's a good place to start, and whereas each episode of LGBTQ victimization, such as physical or verbal harassment or abuse, increases the likelihood of self-harming behavior by two-point-five times on average, and whereas a national study found that forty percent of transgendered adults reported having made a suicide attempt, with ninety-two percent of those individuals reporting having attempted suicide before the age of twenty-five, and whereas having a gay-straight alliance reduces, reduces a child's risk of attempting suicide by fifty percent, and whereas students at schools with gay-straight alliances experience less bullying around gender nonconformity, and whereas federal law guarantees students the right to form gay-straight alliance clubs where other non-curricular clubs exist, and whereas our community is better because of the diversity of our population, and whereas inclusion is a core value of our district, and whereas the school board is committed to creating a safe and welcoming school district for all students, and whereas the school board is committed to helping end the crisis of suicide in our community. Now therefore, the Salem-Kaiser School District Board of Directors proclaims June two thousand nineteen to be the LGBTQ Pride Month and urges our citizens to join us in celebrating our students and our staff regardless of their gender identi- identity or orientation. Is there a discussion? Okay, so I will call.
I just wanted to say that, I mean, I couldn't even imagine what it's like to have to live every day hiding who you are, and that, that would be really tough. And so just the, I think it's really cool that we're making this proclamation, and I hope that, I hope that it helps in the long run. And like, like Jason Collins said, openness may not completely disarm prejudice, but it's a good place to start.
I'd like to just make a comment too. One, I wanted to thank you for being here, but I wanted to just briefly comment on the courage that it takes every day to be who you are. I spent the first part of my career in the military, and at that time period, you know, the military policy was, you may have heard it referred to as don't ask, don't tell. And unfortunately, that wasn't necessarily the case, and it took a lot of courage from the community to, to speak up and to work very hard to have that repealed, and just over the years, the, the changes that we've seen, but it takes courage. And so for me personally, I wanted to say thank you to our students and our parents and our teachers for showing the courage and just, just being courageous. So thank you.
So we'll call for the vote. So, sorry. So all of those in favor of proclaiming June two thousand nineteen as our Salem-Kaiser School District LGBTQ Pride Month? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, so the motion passes unanimously, and? If that would be great, we'll reconvene at seven twenty-five. A five-minute break. Okay, I'm going to call us back to order, and we are going to move on with our action items. So up next, we have adoption of resolution, resolution number two thousand eighteen nineteen dash nine, and this is with regards to authorizing agreement, request from the City of Salem to the school district regarding the taxing district. And so we're going to have a brief comment by the superintendent.
All right, and then let's make sure we have the two board members on the phone.
Director Lee, Director Goss? Director Lee, are you there?
I'm here, Ellen.
Thanks Kathy.
Director Lee?
Okay, thank you. Thanks Chuck.
All right, this item was presented for first reading on May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, and is now being presented for action. You've seen a number of these authorizing agreements from the city council, so I'll just entertain, have you entertain a motion unless there's a question.
Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion if there is a motion. I'll make a motion. Okay, Director Hein, motion, and a second from Director Lippold?
No, no second.
Okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion, make a motion to authorize the agreement request from the City of Salem about the taxing district.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second from anyone on the phone? Either Director Lee or Director Goss?
I'm supportive.
Okay, so we have a second, so we have a motion and a second, and is there any discussion? So Director Hein?
So as I've stated before, I always have mixed feelings about these. It's kind of like the, the money won't go to education regardless of how we vote, but if we're going to change these, obviously that's really going to have to happen at the city level. I do support, you know, fixing up areas that, that are in pretty bad shape, but again, I just have mixed feelings about this, but I will vote for it and support it.
Yeah, well, I mean, as you all know, for the third time now, I don't like these.
One reason is just the fact that the money's not going to the school districts anyway, so why the heck are we voting on it? Secondly, I believe it creates barriers to entry, which, which in our state, we're really good at. Our state, our entire tax system in our state is help, helps large corporations. We make these large taxes, and then we're like, hey, you don't have to pay it, you don't have to pay, you and I don't have to pay it. And then we force, we squeeze small businesses, and so I just think it hurts overall economy. So I'm against these, simply for the fact that I feel like it, it's, this is a symptom of the current system that we have that helps big businesses and hurts small ones, because we shouldn't be having to pass these every single time to help get apartments. If our state and if our city made it easier for builders to build, then it would, we would help our entire housing thing, and especially when we're looking statewide, because I'm a real estate broker, we're seeing a lot of housing prices go up, and a part of its builders aren't building houses below like two hundred and fifty. Of course, people will be like, oh, this guy is, and you'll see some, but to the scale that we need it, we're not seeing that at all. And so I think that if we focused instead on create, getting rid of barriers to entry and helping families and small businesses grow, I think we would be much better as a city. So none of us are voting on this as school board members, because none of the money goes to us. We are voting on this as community members, and so that's why I'm a no vote on this.
Are there other comments from those on the phone?
None from me.
Okay. I, I'll make a comment, and you know, we, we have, these have come up, and in the packet lists those that we've previously voted on, and we've kind of gone round and round on this discussion, but again, this is an area that is in an urban renewal area within the City of Salem, and as we've talked about before, the idea behind urban renewal area is to address urban blight, and these were areas in the downtown core area that years ago, for those of us that remember what that area was like with the paper mill and all of that, and trying to be able to bring developers into the downtown area, and it still is designated as an urban renewal area for the purpose of addressing livability, walkability, and this particular project is for, for a multi, multiple housing unit, and as we've discussed before, not necessarily a low-income housing unit, but it is adding additional units to our much underdeveloped area, and we know that we have less than a one percent vacancy rate in the City of Salem, and this does provide us an opportunity for the school district, whose responsibility for educating our children, to partner with the City of Salem to ensure that we have livable spaces. And so again, we, we do, this comes up periodically, we have this discussion, but I think it's a, a good, healthy discussion, so. So if there are no other comments, I will call for the vote. So all of those.
I'm also in.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead Kathy.
I'm also in favor, and will be supporting that vote. It's designed in urban renewal area for the general good of the public, as well as small and large businesses, and I will be supporting it.
And I guess if I can make a comment too, I would, I'll be supporting this, and just a reminder is that we've been the great beneficiary of urban renewal fund from the City of Salem for CTEC.
Thank you. So calling for the vote, all those in favor of, sorry, I have to go back, all those in favor of resolution number two thousand one eight one nine dash nine, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, those opposed signify by nay.
Nay.
Okay, so we have four ayes and two nays. So the resolution passes. Okay, so next on the agenda is the adoption of resolution number two thousand eighteen nineteen dash ten, which is support of the continuum of care for the Mid Willamette region.
So this item, as you recall, was considered during a work session when you had Jan Calvin here with a presentation, had a chance to ask questions at that time. It was presented for a first reading on May fourteenth during the regular business meeting, is now presented for action, and the staff recommends that the board adopt the resolution.
Have a motion?
Yes, do I read it first?
Just read the mo, yeah.
Or just the motion?
Just the motion. You can read that too.
Okay.
So this is the support of continuum of care for Mid Willamette region. Whereas homelessness is a critical issue in the Mid Willamette region, in Oregon, and across the nation. And whereas more than two thousand six hundred homeless individuals in Marion and Polk Counties were identified through evidence-based assessments between October twenty sixteen and January twenty nineteen. And whereas children, families, veterans, and chronically homeless individuals experiencing mental illness and addictions comprise a large portion of our region's homeless population. And whereas homelessness affects the well-being of Salem-Kaiser students, family, and community with more than one thousand one hundred K-through-twelve students identified as experiencing homelessness during the twenty eighteen twenty nineteen school year. And whereas the Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative was established in twenty sixteen to identify and launch proven strategies to reduce homelessness in our region. And whereas the Willamette homeless, Mid Willamette Homelessness Initiative Strategic Plan recommended that the region assess local inclusion in the rural Oregon continuum of care to understand how best to address the problems of homelessness and the needs of people experiencing homelessness. And whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development created the Continuum of Care Program in nineteen ninety-four as a means for communities across the nation to engage in multi-year strategic planning for homeless programs and services that are well-integrated with planning for mainstream services. Runaway and homeless youth, victims of domestic violence, veterans, seniors, and people experiencing addictions and/or mental illness, and whereas in twenty eleven, Marion-Polk Continuum of Care joined twenty-six Oregon counties in the Balance of State Rural Oregon Continuum of Care. And whereas the Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Steering Committee carefully considered relevant factors and determined that our region could benefit from creating its own continuum of care with enhanced service coordination, local autonomy, and alignment of goals to bring more resources to our community to more effectively reduce homelessness in our region. And now therefore be it resolved that Salem-Kaiser School District Board of Directors supports establishing a continuum of care for the Mid Willamette region and supports the new continuum of care registering with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in two thousand twenty. Development in 2020. So I move that the board adopts the resolution number 2018-19-10.
Second.
Support of continuum of care for Mid Willamette region.
So we have a motion and we have a second. Is there a discussion on the resolution?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would like to know in the therefore it be it resolved section, the word supports, I don't know what supports specifically, specifically means. What does it mean? Please, someone?
I think support in paying attention to the initiative. I think last time the board asked that the superintendent or member of the board was on the overarching governing body, and to my knowledge, they are not asking for dollars from us.
So I just want to clarify, so any change, so any requests for dollars, or personnel, or anything that would equate to organizational structural changes would come back to us before they would be approved? Is that correct?
I think that would be up to you as a board if you wanted that. I mean, it would come up in the budgeting process if it were a budget item, but if you wanted any other request to come forward, you could as a board.
I would want that, so I guess I am making that request, separate from this.
I can speak to that. I'll speak to that just a little bit. Serving on the COG right now, it's not my understanding that there is additional funding request at this point from us, and I think the intent behind this language is that we would be, you know, somewhat of an active participant in this, including both on the COG and then on this, specifically within this group as well.
My concern is not at this point, it's tomorrow, because as those requests come in, those changes will be there, so I would like to know what those changes are, when they come in, and what those requests are when they happen tomorrow, so that we can deal with those. That's what I'm asking.
Maybe some regular updates would be helpful, whether it's money requests or not.
That would be fine.
And I can pass that along as well.
I just want to say, having been a, at one point in my life, a homeless student, I understand how tough it is to focus on schoolwork and live through life, not, not knowing what you're going to eat that same night. And so I just want to say to all of our students who are homeless or in foster care or any of those things, that hopefully this goes beyond just a resolution, and this moves forward to where we take actual, real steps to helping our students. I know we already, we're already doing a lot, and so I want to thank the district for that, but I look forward to seeing the further success that we achieve together. So, thank you.
And I would just add one, it was a, it was quite a, an eye-opener for this, serving on the COG, when we saw the difference of funding available to those who are, are not part of the balance of state and who have created their own continuum in this nature, and I think that this will allow us, along with Polk County and Yamhill County, to draw down a significant amount more of funding, federal funding, to do exactly that, to address the homelessness issue. And, and I appreciate that the COG and the city of Salem and others, because the city was also asked, so I think this is a huge step forward to bringing a significant amount of money to our community to address homelessness. So if there are no other comments, I will call for the vote. So those in favor of adopting resolution 2018-19-10, support of continuum of care for the Mid Willamette region, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, those opposed? Okay, so the resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. So next on the agenda is approval of property transaction with the city of Kaiser and the grant signature authority for completing that transaction.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a-
Second.
Okay, Director Kylo and Director Hein, did you have comments?
Yeah, nope, no comments.
Okay, so this is one that has come before us previously, so we've had discussion, but we'll certainly, if there is any discussion, we'll entertain discussion, or we can call for the vote. Okay, seeing no discussion, those in favor of the approval of the property transaction with the city of Kaiser and granting the signature authority signify support by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, the, that passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is the adoption of resolution 2018-19-11, which is our 2019, 2020 budget, including the resolution to close the bond capital project funds, and resolution to impose and categorize taxes for fiscal year 2019 and 20.
I move that we adopt resolution number 2018-19-11-B, adoption and appropriation of the 2019-20 budget, including resolution to close capital bond, close bond capital projects.
Second.
Fund, and resolution to impose and categorize taxes for fiscal year 2019, 2020 as stated.
So we have a proposal, we also, a motion, we have a second by Director Lee. Is there any discussion with regards to the 2019, 2020 budget, and did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I made my comments earlier.
Okay, so Director Kylo?
During the budget hearings, we did hear about the West Salem newspaper. Did that situation get resolved?
That situation, they're going to revisit in August.
So we don't know the answer?
The answer is it's not resolved yet.
Okay.
Director Lippold?
I just want to say really quick that, I mean, I think we all know that if I saw anything wrong that I felt with the budget, I would not be afraid to say it. So as, as I'm looking through this, it was very clear that Superintendent Perry and our staff and our board was really focused on what's best for kids, and it seemed like, I feel that with this budget, I mean, of course, in a perfect world, we would have everything fully funded, but with what we have, I feel like this budget does a great job with, with appropriating our dollars.
Other comments from Director Goss or Director Lee?
I'm in favor of the adoption of this motion.
I also will support the motion.
Thank you. The only other comment, oh, I'm sorry, Director Hein?
I just wanted to say something regarding what Paul brought up, and when there's a resolution or any changes or more information regarding the newspaper for West Salem, I would like to hear it.
The only other, the comment I had was, I think the district and the board and the budget committee have done a really great job over the last year, listening to the concerns brought forward by the community, and we really appreciate those concerns being brought forward, and I think that you all did an excellent job of incorporating the, you know, the, the need that we know we have with regards to social-emotional learning and counselors, and suicide prevention and awareness and all of that, and we are, we are very, very grateful that you, you listen to the community and you find a way to prioritize those things, and that you are very, very fiscally responsible, and I always like to give a shout out to Mike Wolf and your team, because we know that so many districts are in a, in a world of hurt right now with regards to some of the expenses, and you guys have done a phenomenal job from year to year of managing our, our debt and being very wise, and so we truly appreciate it. Okay, so I will call for the vote with regards to adopting resolution 2000, number 2018-19-11, which is our 2019-20 budget. Did I miss?
You need to add the B.
Oh, B.
There's A, but B.
Okay, and also including, pardon? Add B, okay, which is the amendment that Superintendent Perry addressed earlier, so the additional funding for measure 98 funding.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, okay, so tho, all those in favor adopting the 2019 budget, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
So the motion passes five to one. Thank you. So next on our action items is the delegation of authority to the superintendent or her designee to complete property transactions to support the timely delivery of the 2018 bond program.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
And I just- And I just wanted to mention, you have seen this before, and this will allow us to sign those property transactions that are small. We'll keep board leadership updated if this is approved.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on this action item? Okay, seeing none, I will call for the vote. So all those in favor of the delegation of authority to the superintendent or her designee to complete property transactions, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Okay, and next on the agenda is the approval of the May, May twenty-one, 2019 school board election results from both Marion and Polk Counties.
All right, just as a little bit of background, the school board is required by law to approve the final election results on the May twenty-first, 2019 county election for three seats on the Salem Kaiser school boards. Those are listed on your, in your packet for zone two, four, and six, and the term will begin on July one for these three members, once you certify the results.
Great, okay.
We already had a, we, we need a motion.
Oh, I move, I move for the board to approve the May twenty-first, 2019 county election results for the three school board member seats.
Do we have a second?
Is it tacky for me a second?
No, you're on the board.
You're on the board, you're current.
Okay, is there a discussion of the results?
Oh, I, yeah, I just want to say congratulations to our new board members. I'm excited to work with you, and to say thank you to Jim and Chuck for all of their work that they've done with us. I mean, they have been instrumental in a lot of the projects and a lot of things our district has been, has been doing, and then also to the candidates who ran against these three new, or three, well, one current board member, and our two new board members. I mean, it takes a lot of guts to run for an office like that, and also a special shout out to Rolf for showing up today even, just because it just shows dedication to education.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approval of the May 2019 school board election results signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. And then last on our, I'm sorry, last on our action items is the employment contracts of the assistant superintendents, and I believe that we have a discussion for us.
Yep, so I'm just going to give you a little background. This is a reminder, in twenty, August of 2018, the position of assistant superintendent became vacant, and we did a comprehensive recruitment process that included multiple internal and external stakeholders, and by the end of the process, it was determined that the best course of action would be to have an interim assistant superintendent for the eighteen-nineteen school year. Thank you, Jim, for saying yes to the phone call. And then during the eighteen-nineteen school year, we had two directors of academic achievement, one with a focus on elementary, one with a focus on secondary, plus the interim assistant superintendent. This interim leadership structure gave us a chance to confirm what I thought, what was important to have, a focus on elementary and a focus on secondary. And what you've seen as part of that work is our key performance indicators, our revised strategic plan, the leading of the Office of Behavioral Learning, and really tight focus on elementary and also on secondary. There's a list of the activities that fall under this, but each department that falls under these two positions are very large departments in and of themselves. So in spending that year, kind of studying the structure, I determined that those two positions should be converted to assistant superintendent positions. It does not add a position to the budget regardless of what was reported. It actually, those two positions are already in the budget. One was the assistant superintendent, one's the director of academic achievement. And as a reminder, our interim assistant superintendent, we left a vacancy as a CTE director. So this was, his intent was always to go back into that CTE director position and has not applied or been interested in the position. So it does align to other large school districts that have two assistant superintendents or two deputy superintendents, some are called, and so these are the employment contracts for those assistant superintendent contracts come to you. Marty asked a really good question about what happens if something happens to you, Kristi, and we have to have emergency superintendent succession. I think that this leadership structure actually gives you options, and depending on where you would be in a year, especially usually emergencies happen, you need a temporary help, it gives you choices of who's the right person at the right time, depending on the needs of the district. So I think it strengthens the emergency succession planning. It doesn't take away your right to choose your, who would be a next superintendent, as you remember last, you may not remember last time, but there were in emergency succession planning, but that didn't become the choice of the board in the, in the selection process. So you still have that right. So with that, I'm presenting you Linda Myers and Craig Sprouls as current district leaders that will do the right work for us in the right way, and have really, in a short order, taken the district a long way over the course of this year. And my request is that you approve the assistant superintendent contracts for both of them.
Do we have a motion?
I move that the board approves the assistant superintendent contracts for Linda Myers and Craig Sprouls.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on this action item?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I've gotten to know both Craig and Linda on my time on the school board, and I think they're both excellent. The fact that it doesn't, we're not adding new positions to administration, these are all people who are already administrators. What we're allowing our district to do is to put them in positions that they feel will help our district the best. So it's not adding new dollars, it's not adding a bunch of new things, and so, especially when we're looking at our, the way our administration isn't overinflated like I've seen in other school districts, so I think that's awesome, and it's just moving things around, so it doesn't really affect us too much, except for it just strengthens us for the future.
Director Kylo?
Okay, I always want us to emulate Portland and Beaverton, because they're such sterling models. I will be voting against both of these, because when I asked the question during the budget hearings about the budget book, which already had this, this piece in place, I was told it hadn't been decided, when obviously, as I read this, it had been. I feel that we were somewhat, if we'd been told then, I don't think it would have been a problem, but because I feel a bit, perhaps it wasn't as transparent, and it was not quite as upfront as it could have been, I don't feel I can support it. I do believe that Craig and Linda have both done fine jobs, and I support them, I just don't support this process and the way it was done.
Are there other comments from either Director Lee or Director Goss?
I, you know, objectively, I think it's a very prudent, practical move, and I support it.
And I will support Director Lee as well. I thought it was very transparent and understood what was happening from the beginning.
And I would just add that over the last year, I think, like Director Lippold said, we've, we've had an opportunity to see this structure in place and the benefits from it, and I really appreciate that our Coalition for Equity and Inclusion came out and spoke on behalf of both of these- on behalf of both of these individuals and this structure. And I think with regards to, I don't know that we're necessarily emulating Portland and Beaverton, but I think it's based on the size and the complexity of the district. And I think this is a very prudent move on our part to, to adopt this type of structure. So I will be supporting it as well. So, is there any additional comments? So I will call for the vote, and the vote would be, let's see, to approve the assistant superintendent contracts for both Linda Meyer and Craig Sprouls. And those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
So the motion passes five to one. Okay, so that concludes our action items. And next on the agenda is our consent calendar. And I don't believe we had anyone that was going to pull anything at this point. So can I get a motion to move the consent calendar?
I move to accept the consent calendar.
Okay, all those in favor of adopting the consent calendar, please signify by, oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Is there a discussion on the consent calendar? My apologies.
It's a quick one, I promise. A lot of the grants that are in this are targeted towards Indian education and as Native American and having a lot of family and friends who are native. I think it's awesome. So, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, so all those in favor of moving the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
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 The consent calendar is so moved. And next on the agenda, we do not have any readings at this point, so we will move on to reports. And we will start with executive limitation number 11, which is academic program.
All right, I'm gonna, since we've had a long night, try to just do some highlights. But on the academic program executive limitation, I just want to remind the board that we have reported on academic programs throughout the school year. So we've done the strategic planning reports, we've talked about opposite behavioral learning. So we've done a lot of those, so there's actually probably no way to get all the highlights here. So I'm just going to point to a couple things. Under executive, the first page, halfway down, evidence of compliance, I want to say that we added to the Ready Gen adoption, the curriculum related to the teaching of foundational reading skills. To address the need, we saw that as a gap, and we heard from our teachers that was a gap. We shared this, I believe, in our last summer session. So we have adopted ECRI, and by the beginning of the 1920 school year, every elementary school has completed training in ECRI and will have access to the curriculum. The next section down for the math, Ready Math Curriculum, I got a chance to look at some of the initial assessment results last week. And remember, this is our new math adoption in every school. So in the fall, we had about 6% of our students on grade level in, as assessed by I-Ready. And this spring, we're up to 33%, so a huge growth. That means more than a year's growth in case of some kids. And our Tier 3, which are two years below grade level, our preliminary results were 31%, were below grade level in the fall, and were down to about 13% in the spring. So that initial look at that I-Ready is a good way for us to begin measuring how effective that curriculum is. On the next page, science, especially at the elementary level, continues, continues to be one of the things we really have to figure out how to work on. It is a time in the school day issue. Our, the reality is, we wish we had more time at the elementary level in the school day. By the time you do the research-based amounts for reading and math, you have very little time for the specials or the elective programs. So we have been working on science. We will have 100% of our elementary students participate in outdoor school next year, and we'll keep focusing on finding better ways and more ways to integrate and find time for science. And then at the secondary level, we've recently redone the social studies curriculum mapping, and I think it would be great for us to have a report in the boardroom at some point around that because the way they have gone through the process and the way they have organized the structure of social studies really demonstrated thinking carefully about the equity work and how our students see themselves in what we teach. So I, of interest, I would encourage us to have a presentation on that in the future. And there is a course on financial literacy. And the other, you know, the innovations where appropriate, we could port, we could point to CTE, CTEC, some of the CTE programs at our middle levels are community collaborative with Mountain West and the increase in the graduation rates at McKee and North and the Attendance Initiative. And then also, we, I woven some comments about our key performance indicators. And so with that, I'll turn it over to questions for you rather than going through all items.
Oh, Director Kyla?
I remember last year in the budget, there were some extra coaches for the Ready Gen. I'm assuming that they, obviously, from what you're telling us, their work paid off. Is that correct?
Extra?
We hired some extra coaches. There was a budget issue. You had several principals come in to tell us that they were needed.
Oh, are you talking about the Ed Excellence contract?
Mm-hmm.
I'll let Craig or Linda respond to that.
So we had Ed Excellence on board, continuing to consult through the remainder of this year, and we have concluded that contract and are no longer proceeding with Ed Excellence into next year. So they completed their targeted work in Ready Gen in both the curriculum maps and the scope and sequencing documents and the initial building of the assessments to supplement Ready Gen, and that work has all been complete. And the continuation of any refinements with Ready Gen materials will continue just with our staff in the elementary curriculum office.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions?
So because Director Green is not here, I will ask the question.
Yeah.
I probably don't even need to say it, but he would, if he were here, he would ask you with regards to the, what, what ended up happening with the contract with regards to the English language learners for this program. A couple of years ago, there was the concern with the curriculum, the Spanish.
Yeah, got it, with the Ready Gen. I'm gonna see if Craig or Linda could respond to where we are with our Spanish Ready Gen materials and all of that. Craig doesn't have the history, so, yeah.
I think you're referring to the continued negotiations that we had with Pearson in order to find some remedy for, yeah. So Pearson is the publisher that published Ready Gen, and as you recall, the initial promise included a full battery of materials in Spanish then, which were not provided. And so we met with Pearson to attempt to find some remedies and actually received several thousands of dollars in, in free materials, though did not provide the complement of Spanish materials. So we have continued to draft most of those on our own, and we have used the local expertise within, led by some of our program associates, our licensed teacher leaders, to lead some of that work in-house. I don't have a ton of updated detail on where we are throughout the, the latest aspect of that work this spring, but we could certainly get to those details if you're interested.
Actually, yes, yeah, that would be great. So maybe our next, next table meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd like to hear an update on that. Thank you. Director Hein?
So on that, I'm just curious, what are the ramifications to the publisher who did not do what they said they were going to do?
Yeah, they did, they did provide us, oh, yeah, they, they provided us like over 100, I can't remember the details now, but $100,000 or more of some curriculum. The ECRI materials, the ECRI program, we used many of, they provided a lot of the beginning reading books for us that matched with that. So there, there has been some value. They came to the table and really studied and listened and spent a whole day in our district. So they have done some, I just can't remember all the details offhand.
Thank you. Okay, so next is executive limitation number 12 regarding legally required policies.
Yeah, and I'm gonna encourage us to, with the new board, take this policy especially to the summer agenda planning. This is a legacy policy, and when board, policy governance was adopted, there was a set of policies that were board-required, and they have just hung on to this document where we've really completed it. I will tell you, on the second page of this report, we've made the changes to some of these following major policies. So it starts with ISSA 001 parent involvement. So those are some changes we've made. We have them, if you would like a PDF version of all these policies. And then I'd like us to consider in this summer is that we think differently about this EL. And I can spend some time with the new board this summer to explain why I think a change is necessary to this EL. Oh, I'm sorry, and I've got one, just one pending or updated executive limitation. When we reported on EL 9, item number two, we talked about the risk fund. And so we have an updated actuary report that confirms that the risk fund has sufficient resources to address significant loss for the 1928, 19, 2019, 20 fiscal period. And the staff review of the fund suggests that we should consider at a point in the future allocation of additional resources into that fund. But the initial actuary report said that the fund was in okay condition for 1920. So that's an updated EL.
So if there are no additional questions on that, we will move on to our graduation report.
All right, we are taking a little different tact on our graduation report this year. Lillian is going to present our 2019 graduation report. Without YouTube videos and commercials this time, please.
Well, we can't guarantee that. There's definitely a video.
Okay.
So I, as we've gone into the graduation season, our communications team has really taken an approach to support graduation, much in the way that a major brand like Nike would support their premier product, right? You're not going to roll out the best Air Jordan and then not put pictures of it everywhere. So I hope that you've noticed throughout our communications and our newsletters and our social media, that we have been really celebrating our ultimate product. We, we got these little people to be big people who have now walked across the stage and earned diplomas. So this year, we had nearly 2,750 graduates. They were awarded more than $33 million in scholarships. Yeah, yeah. We can clap. I need a hype man or like music for this presentation, right? Like spotlights. They've earned more than 200 Seals of Biliteracy so far, but there are more to come because in July, we get those results from the International Baccalaureate Testing. Most of our Seals of Biliteracy are in Spanish, but you also have French, German, Italian, other languages. And so we will look for those in July and put out a subsequent press release at that time, celebrating those numbers. At McKee, they had 490 graduates who were awarded $8.7 million in scholarships. Three of those students are Ford Scholars. Only 125 Ford Scholars are named statewide, and three of them are from McKee. Ford Scholars get 90% of their college costs taken care of. All 49 of those McKee Avid graduates were accepted into four-year universities. And at South Salem High, this is a big one, and many kudos to Cynthia's team, because Dwight and Kenny definitely have been out in the schools. Every time I go to a school, I see one of those two guys. 100% of the Black and African-American students, that's a class of 18 students, graduated from South Salem, and 94% of the Pacific Islanders graduated. So that's definitely proof of the work that they've been putting in. And I think, you know, those, Kenny and Dwight are going to continue to be parts of those families for the rest of those children's lives because they're in. When Kristi and I were at Sprague's graduation, one of the Pacific Islanders, the second he saw Kenny just burst into tears. So we had to get him cleaned up so he could take a selfie with. At McNary, they had 261 graduates attending a two- or four-year college. 24, and this is the most number ever for McNary since they've been tracking, 24 students are entering the military, representing all branches. In previous years, the number has been less than 10. So this is a significant increase. And those, those graduates at McNary, world-class graduates at McNary, were awarded $9.5 million in scholarships. At the Early College, we had 47 graduates. They also received college credits with their diplomas. Our Teen Parent Program had 26 graduates. Roberts, and, and I know Director Hein was there and had a good time at that graduation with us. At Roberts, 82 students graduated with diplomas and another 89 with GEDs. And our Community Transition Program, we had 47 graduates. Oh, I'm pointing the wrong way. This is some of the examples, oops. These are some of the examples that you may have seen of our student profiles online. Every day leading up to graduation, we featured a different student and gave a bio on them and what their future plans were. And these were really cool because the students, Lynette and Bum Binton, who you guys remember from her speech at the board meeting, Lynette helped us reach out to the students, get them to participate in this. So they were self-selecting to be part of it and sharing their photos with us, so then we could turn around and put them online to celebrate them. The other piece that you guys may have seen this year when you were at graduation were our conversation bubbles, where we wrote places, dry erase for people to thank, send their thank yous to moms, dads, grandparents, teachers, mentors, whoever helped them get across the stage. And those were at every single graduation. We also had professional photographers at each graduation, and we're getting those photos back now, and they'll be going into albums online. And then we also use those for future marketing as well. So the billboards that we do for Everyday 24J, those are our graduates, our students that we're celebrating and honoring there. And speaking of Everyday 24J, I just got information today that we have 414 more students who are regular attenders this time this year than last year. These are some of the examples of the photos that we were able to take. I believe both of those are from South Salem, so Sharon, I, probably looks familiar. And then the final piece that I wanted to share with you, which many of you seen, and I know that Jessie and Kathy got a view of this when we were, we had just gotten the information, or gotten the link from the news. But KJ Kovak is a graduate from McKee. Entering senior year, he had seven credits. He is a Pacific Islander, and he became good friends with Kenny. And KJ, after the story, I'll share a really special connection with you. I think we might have to watch an ad. I'm sorry, I don't know how to get around. We're gonna build some professional development for Linda.
Bob's coaching her from the side. That's why Bob is next to Linda.
First turned the tassel in Salem, but for one student in particular, the road to get to that stage was much more difficult than really any of us could imagine. I'll tell it's Candor. Ken joins live with the story that you'll see only on 12. Candor?
Well, Wayne, the graduation ceremony was actually held at the state fairgrounds, but we wanted to introduce our story here at McKee High School because this is where KJ Kovak overcame heartbreak and so many obstacles with a missed year of school. So we could still graduate with this class. This walk a rite of passage through childhood and adulthood. And owed to all the accomplishments from tot to teen. As for McKee High graduate, KJ Kovak.
I'm doing this for them. I'm trying to make them proud.
A promise to his parents who couldn't be here to cheer him on, but always inspired him to make a better life. The family immigrated to Hawaii from the island of Chuk, Micronesia, when KJ was in fifth grade. By the time he entered high school in Maui.
I was slacking in. My grades were all poor.
So the family moved to Salem, Oregon for a fresh start.
I was thinking about starting to work hard. I was thinking about starting to work hard and really do what my mother said, to graduate to high school and have a better future. I was only in school like four, five weeks, and that's when my mom passed.
A heart attack took his mother's sophomore year. Then tragically, his father died the same way about a year later.
It was really hard to focus in school when you lost both parents.
By senior year, KJ only had half the credits needed to graduate, but somehow 100% of the drive to get it done.
He said, "I don't care what I need to do. I'm going to graduate for my parents."
So with the help of his school resource counselor and a special mentor, he doubled up on classes, took courses online, and often started homework late at night after caring for his nephews.
The first day he told me, "I got you, Coach." So it was like, mm, I knew he had it in him.
Now, on the last day-
I finally achieved what my parents wanted me to.
A victory dance across the stage. Hopes for the helpers.
He has actually reiterated me and my job.
Gifts from those who believe.
A lot of other kids in the community can look at him and say, "Look what he did and where he was at, and with hard work, it can all still happen."
And his cheering family. And his sacrifices to give here, and just what it means to KJ.
I'm feeling pretty good. I'm proud of myself.
And KJ does have big plans now. He plans on heading to Shemeketa Community College here in Salem. He wants to become a firefighter perhaps someday, because he wants to be able to help people and also make a good wage to help support his family and his extended family. Now, his school counselor has set up a GoFundMe account to help with his school expenses. If you'd like to contribute, there will be a link in the online version of this story at kdtv.com. Reporting live tonight in Salem, Candora Kent, Foxville, Oregon.
So following this story, his counselor is managing the GoFundMe account. They've received $1,500 to help KJ with his tuition and expenses. We also had a community member who reached out, who wants to pay for his books at the bookstore. And then the piece that's really, just makes you want to cry. One of the Sprague parent, Kyle McMahon, whose daughter graduated this year, his son is also one of the students who took his own life. He is a fire chief with Marion County, and he and KJ have now connected. And they're going to have lunch, and he is going to help mentor KJ through getting to be a firefighter. So just a really beautiful moment, and just kind of wanted, I wanted to end it on that piece and let us all celebrate what makes our kids so special and our community so great.
So now, back to the exciting things, the Board and Budget Committee meeting schedule.
All right. So just as a quick point of clarification, we are not going to have a Board meeting on June 25th in payment for many years of service. We're going to let them, Jim and Chuck, take that meeting off. We'll have our first business session on Tuesday, July 16th at 6:00 PM. And then we'll have our summer work session Tuesday, August 13th, 12 to 8:00 PM, with a potential business meeting at 6:00 PM. And then August 27th will be our next meets. We'll get the full 1920 meeting schedule out, but thought it'd be good to get Board leadership in place in our new Board members before we make some of those recommendations.
So thank you so much to those of you who have hung with us through this entire meeting. We appreciate you being here. And so now, for the last part of our meeting, we will take public comment for those items that were not part of agenda items. And so I do have a, I have a sign-up list. And so Rita, if you're still here, is Rita still here?
I don't need to.
Okay, okay, okay. So next on the list is Christine McLaury. And just as a reminder, if you could state your name and your, we don't need your address, but just your, if you're in Salem or Kaiser, please.
It's Christine McLaury, and I live in Salem, Oregon. I currently have a fifth grader at Liberty and had another student graduate from Liberty as well. We've gotten to know one of the staff members, Carrie, over the past nine years. It has recently come to my attention that Carrie is being forced to transfer to another school. I feel this would be a terrible mistake. For many students, losing Carrie from Liberty would be as bad as losing a family member. Students at Liberty have come to know and trust Carrie. Carrie has become an integral part of the Liberty family, not to mention her other close schools in the South Salem area. As a parent, I have gone to Carrie for help in different situations, and she's always gone the extra mile, not just for my family, but others. A few years ago, I had surgery, and my youngest child at Liberty came to Carrie upset and concerned about my well-being and how things were going. She took the time to call a close friend of mine and be able to give my son an update and peace of mind. I have seen her utilize community resources for families, including but not limited to a program that she helped put together, school supplies and backpacks for students in need. I have asked Carrie's advice when my child was transitioning into middle school. I was on the PTC Board of Liberty for a few years and could tell you many more stories when Carrie has come to the Board looking for resources to help Liberty families or a community member in need. I and many others could spend well more than three minutes each discussing how much Carrie means to the Liberty family. Recently, my middle schooler has been going through an extremely tough time and has even made comments in regards to committing suicide. The first person I turned to was his school counselor. I'm extremely grateful that there was a counselor to talk to and that could help me and my son with the situations that were causing this. I can say, if I had not gotten help from him, I would have gone straight to Carrie. Our kids go through so much nowadays in a school. A counselor should be there to offer advice to students at crucial turning points in their lives. Whether these counselors work in elementary, middle, or high school, they ought to be there for students who are going through a difficult time or just need advice and support. In general, the importance of having school counselors kids can trust should be one of our highest concerns. Carrie is this person for Liberty. Carrie has been there for these turning points for the Liberty students. She's important to them, and they are important to her. Would you want this for your child or your grandchild? For them to have a Carrie Stanaway in their corner? To give them the stability in their school life, her dedication improves the Liberty family. In closing, in the decision of whether to cancel the transfer doesn't lie with the many wonderful people you're going to hear from, it ultimately resides with someone else. I would like to ask for support. I would like to show a stand, the people behind me that are here in support or raising their hands, and I would hope that someone can help us in this decision of making her transfer. Please do not give our students an unnecessary loss just for the reason of change.
Next up, we have April Defour, if she's still, okay, great. And you had given us written comment, too. Thank you.
I wasn't sure if I'd get back in time. My name's April Defour, and I live in Salem. My name is April Defour, and I'm a parent at Liberty. I am here tonight to address a concern that I believe is a huge impact on our school. My understanding is that there are a couple counselors being transferred around in the schools. I do not feel that this is a good thing for our school, or any other school for that matter, unless there is a valid reason for doing so, and my understanding is there is not. I have been told that it is not up to the administration for this move, so if not them, then who and why? I believe that moving counselors around in schools is not a positive impact. The students look for consistency and trust with the counselors. Sometimes, this is the only person they feel they can go to. So now you take that away? With the high suicide rate in Salem-Kaiser School District, why would this even be considered? I have known our school counselor, Carrie Stanaway, for many years. I have seen the positive impact she has had on the students and families and all of the things she has implemented into our school to bring families together. If a counselor brings so much positivity to a school, why would it be changed? Yes, changes can be good, a good thing, but not with school counselors unless absolutely necessary, especially with a district that has the suicide rate that we do. Our counselor knows each student, they know, she knows, they know that they can go to her with anything and feel it's safe. I know this because my daughter has been that child. When our counselor went on medical leave, my child did not want to talk to the subcounselor. She wanted to wait for hours to come back, because she trusted her. You have to build trust and confidence with the students and parents, and no issues will be taken care of. Our school counselor, Carrie Stanaway, has done this and more. Last night at my daughter's fifth grade graduation, one of the students thanked our counselor in her speech and said how much she would miss her. That says a lot to me. This makes no sense to me or to others why this is happening. These students have enough in their lives to worry about, for some, boundaries are changing, which means they will be moved from schools they have been at for years and friends they have known equally as long. Counselors need to be the consistent. These students need someone that will listen when no one else will. This is not the first time I voiced my opinion and what I am passionate about for the kids. I am that mom. I understand many letters have been written and phone calls have been made. I ask that you hear each of us and listen to us. For some, it is difficult for them to speak up, because they are afraid that they, too, will be transferred. This is also another matter that at some point should be addressed, as why teachers and staff are afraid to voice their opinions and concerns with fear of consequences. It's time no one is afraid to speak up, and we all realize that this is about our children, and teachers and staff can make the choice if they want to leave their school. Consistency and stability and trust is what we can help a child thrive. I ask you to all be a part of that. Thank you. And one other thing that I want to mention is tonight, I see that there was a consistency of counselors being mentioned tonight, and how that was a huge impact. And to make that change with these children is crucial not to do. Please, thank you.
Next up is Joel Webb.
Good evening, Kristy Perry and the School Board. My name is Joel Webb, and I'm a Salem resident of 35 years. And I live in South Salem. Both of my children go to Liberty Elementary School. The focus of this statement is directed at decision-makers who have taken a course of action, which, if followed, will have dire consequences to the community it has been entrusted to serve. The mental health crisis in our community is real and upon us. If decision-makers decide to remove a longstanding mental health professional from our children at Liberty, the district will then be responsible for explaining to the public how they justified this decision in the scope of the district's overall plan to promote school environment stability and mental health support for children. Decision-makers must also look into the eyes of the children and families who will be affected by this choice and explain to them why this relationship is being fractured. Over and over, our school counselor has entered into the lives of families dark moments and shed light, given hope and shared love. For example, four weeks ago, our school counselor showed up the night of an apartment fire off of Skyline to support families in need. Excuse me. Our counselor is doing her job at the highest level because of the trust and reputation she has built in our neighborhood over the last eight years. Excuse me. Why would anyone who is dedicated to the welfare of children want to disrupt the service of such a vital member of our community? Our district has made it very clear that we must make mental health a priority. This decision to move counselors contradicts the district's values. I'm left feeling confused. I'm confused why anyone who knows the importance of creating stable conditions for children and families would make such an impactful decision without community input. The concern for the counselor-child relationship and the time it takes to build these trusted relationships has been lost in this decision. In closing, our community is asking respectfully for decision-makers to reverse course. We are asking you to choose the heart and soul of children over the division and strife of politics. We are asking that you reinstate this longtime advocate for children back into our community and fix what has been broken in our neighborhood's collective heart. One of the world's greatest counselors of children, Fred Rogers, said this. Listen, listening is where love begins. Listening to ourselves and then to our neighbors. My hope is that you will listen to the families you serve and do what's right. Thank you for your time.
Up next is Ann Coleman.
Good evening, members of the School Board and Superintendent Perry. My name is Ann Coleman, and I reside in Salem. I'm a staff member at Liberty Elementary and also a Liberty parent, as are many of my colleagues. I'm here tonight to respectfully request that the administrative transfer of Carrie Stanaway to another school be reconsidered. This decision to remove Carrie from our staff is a severe blow to our Liberty community. Carrie Stanaway is a tremendously valued member of our Liberty staff. Carrie knows all of our Liberty kids by name, knows their families, and knows their stories. Her relationship with our students and staff is at the heart of our school community. Carrie fosters and maintains professional and supportive relationships with our families and keeps the valuable home-to-school connection open. As a teacher, I see this every day with families from all walks of life. As a parent of two Liberty students, I've experienced it personally. Liberty parents know the loss that our students and their families will feel without Carrie at Liberty. Mrs. Stanaway's years at Liberty have allowed her to develop meaningful relationships with our students. All students, with or without trauma and crisis, know that their needs matter to Carrie. This relationship and influence reaches beyond their time at Liberty and continues into middle and high school. Carrie tirelessly works behind the scenes to support our Liberty students. I could list pages of examples, but will simply name a few. Carrie covers classrooms at a moment's notice, works the book fair, gets lunches for kids. She coordinates assistance opportunities for students and families, spearheads school family events before school, and organizes our annual Career Day utilizing parents and community members. Carrie regularly counsels students dealing with death, crisis, trauma, abuse, suicidal thoughts, and mental health issues. Big or small, Carrie is there for our school community, ready to do whatever is needed for our kids. The biggest reason that I cannot fathom the decision to remove Carrie from Liberty is the huge changes our building is currently gearing up for due to the adjustments of school boundaries. We've been told by our administrator that we will be receiving up to 100 new students, and we are adding four new teachers to our staff. Carrie readily knows how to best support these new teachers to bring them up to speed with our school. She knows which students and families need ongoing and continuing assistance and support. Carrie has already worked with many Shirley families as they deal with the transition of moving to a new school. It makes no sense during a time of great upheaval to remove Carrie from our students' lives and remove her expertise from our staff. It is my sincere hope that the administrative decision to transfer Carrie from Liberty be reconsidered. This request is not about the transfer being an inconvenience to our school. It is not about doubting the abilities of her replacement. It is about a district decision being made that does not benefit our students. It is about the impact her removal from our staff will have upon our kids. This is not a prudent time for our school to undergo such a staff change. Carrie's work at Liberty and in the Sprague area is critical to maintaining our continuing student success and fostering our positive school community. Thank you for your time and interest in this important event.
So next up is Stephanie Brockway.
I live in Salem, and I have been a teacher in the district for 19 years. Good evening, School Board members and Superintendent Perry. I'm speaking tonight to respectfully request that the transfer of Liberty Elementary's counselor, Carrie Stanaway, be reconsidered. Carrie is a person of true integrity and character. She exhibits the highest level of commitment to her work and is always going above and beyond her expected duties to ensure that the myriad of needs faced by students and families are met. It takes years to gain the knowledge of students and families that Carrie has. Even after hearing all you have about what an amazing asset Carrie Stanaway is to our Liberty students, some of you may be asking yourselves, "Why are these people here? Why does this matter so much to them? Why is this such a big issue?" The Liberty staff members who are here tonight and the ones who felt they could not be here have decided to be present, though we have a high level of fear, a fear of retribution, retaliation for speaking truthfully. Our school motto is "At Liberty We Leap," which includes living respectfully and acting responsibly. And tonight, we're taking a leap of faith that we can speak honestly, that someone with the ability to right a wrong will hear us, and we will not be punished for it. The thoroughly illogical decision- The thoroughly illogical decision to transfer Carrie is a culmination of four difficult years at Liberty. During these years, we've faced many difficult situations that have been internally created. We've been told by multiple administrators through years and some work that we've done with the district to remain silent, to accept the way things are, or to move on to a different school district. And in order to keep our jobs, we followed those directives. We've agreed to disagree, and we've put our focus on being the best teachers we can for the students that we love and serve. But after four long years, to be silent is to be complicit. It's no longer acceptable to be devalued and pressed into silence because we fear losing our jobs at Liberty. We teach students not to be bystanders when something wrong is happening. We teach them to seek help, and we're seeking help tonight with this situation that, in truth, is an indicator of a much larger issue. All employees of the district are at-will employees. The district can move us wherever they want, whenever they want, and we know that. But this should not be a license for administrators to be able to do things that are counterproductive to the best interest of the students we are responsible for. This transfer is not in the best interest of anyone at a building or a district level. It's also a very poor use of a valuable district resources, such as part of Carrie's transfer, other counselors are being removed from their buildings, including a bilingual counselor who's being removed from a bilingual immersion program and placed into our school that has less than 1% Spanish bilingual population. That's a very poor use of a high-demand district in our, sorry, a high-demand skill in our district. My colleagues and I are passionate about our work, our school, and above all, our students. With this passion, we will speak truth and do what is right for our students. It's been overwhelming to realize the profoundly negative impact that Carrie's departure will have. We respectfully request that the decision to transfer Carrie Stanaway away from Liberty be reconsidered. Liberty needs the stability of our existing counselor to assure that our students move forward successfully and as smoothly as possible during a time of immense change next year. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Catherine Lane. I'm a South Salem resident, and I have a daughter who just graduated from Liberty and a daughter going into second grade. When I heard that Carrie Stanaway would be, being transferred away from Liberty, I was really disappointed. My oldest daughter Nora has been struggling with mental health issues since she was three. So we've had our share of counselors, and I've learned that one of the most important things in a counselor is time. Time for the counselor to earn the child's trust, time for the counselor to understand your child and understand what your child needs, and time for the counselor to understand your family and your family dynamics. I'm sure that there is a reason behind Carrie's transfer. I would just ask that that decision be weighed carefully against the costs of that transfer. You've heard from a number of parents, Carrie's colleagues, about how wonderful she is. My daughter was in an emotional growth classroom, being put into seclusion numerous times last year. This year, she has been in a general education classroom, doing very well, and a lot of that is because of the work that Carrie has done. And I don't think that if this transfer happened last year, that that would have happened, starting fresh with a new counselor. And although we've, you know, made it across the river, there are other children who are midstream, and you don't switch horses midstream. I feel really strongly about this. I may be very disappointed if she is transferred, because my youngest child is in Liberty. She knows our family. We trust her. If there was an issue with my younger child, you know, and she made a recommendation, I would feel confident taking that recommendation, whereas if we have somebody new, there's a lot of history there that cannot be transferred, that you can't tell to somebody else. So please reconsider this decision, or look into who's making the decision and why. Thank you.
So, thank you to all of you who came to speak about this issue. We have a couple other folks coming up, but I believe it's related to a different issue. So I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, on behalf of the board, we heard your concerns, and will obviously, you know, have a conversation with the superintendent about what's happening and the concern. I don't know if you have any comments?
I think, I think as board leadership, we-
Yeah. Yeah, so I give you my promise that, board leadership, we will have a conversation about this, and just, at least, you know, you were very respectful in asking that we at least take a look at this, so we absolutely will do that. And we appreciate that you took, you know, an entire evening to come here and express a concern, and it sounds like you're, you have a pretty phenomenal person that you're rallying behind, so, so thank you for being here. We have two other individuals signed up. First one is Claire Campbell. Did you want to come up with Shannon as well?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a whole group, great.
And you made it through the whole meeting.
Yeah, congratulations.
Yeah, hope you had cupcakes.
Good evening, Superintendent Perry and members of the Salem-Kaiser District Board. My name is Claire Campbell. I'm 14 years old, and I'm in eighth grader at Leslie Middle School. Today, I would like to talk to you about why I think our school dress code should be more progressive. When you're a young woman, your life is already so hectic and difficult. There's an expectation that one should be skinny and beautiful. The only thing that really seems to matter to other people is how you look. You have to wake up every morning and look in the mirror with all of this in mind. The hashtag Me Too movement completely changed that way of thinking, including dress codes. It finally opened up conversations that have been a long time coming. We, as students in the Salem-Kaiser School District, need to be taught that women are not just bodies. They're smart and capable of great things, just like males. When a student gets dress-coded, it makes them feel ashamed, hurt, small, not relevant, ugly, not loved, and embarrassed. In my experience, getting dress-coded is a big deal. You get pulled out into the hallway, and they tell you not to dress the way you do, often in the presence of peers passing by. You feel robbed of your pride and embarrassed, two very strong emotions, which over time can lead to anxiety, depression, and an overall feeling of being inadequate. We all know that ripped jeans are in the trends right now, but if you have ripped jeans, if you have holes in your ripped jeans above your fingertip length, you get dress-coded by a teacher or an administrator. You have to go the entire day with duct tape covering that hole. It can be very humiliating. This said, I must give credit where credit is due. The staff tries to remind us to love ourselves every day. Their posters up everywhere, just saying that. Also, the school counselors are always available and willing to discuss their issues, but only by appointment, and those are booked anywhere from five to 10 school days out. The staff really does want us to love ourselves, and I believe their intentions are good. But there's only one problem. If you want us to love ourselves so desperately, then why tell us to cover ourselves when you see us? Why go to all that work to get us to love ourselves, only to publicly embarrass us when archaic dress code policies are enforced? Those two things cannot happen at the same time. I would encourage a school to consider a more progressive dress code. I provided the dress code for the Eugene area. This dress code allows students to safely explore their own sense of style, to express themselves through choice of attire, and it fosters a safe learning environment for all students. I've also provided copies of the Oregon Now Model Student Dress Code, February 2016. This dress code is the perfect dress code for our district. Here are some of the things that students should be allowed to wear. Hats, including religious wear, hoodie, sweatshirts, hoods allowed, fitted pants such as leggings, yoga pants, and skinny jeans, midriff barring shirts within reason, no undergarments visible, obviously, pajamas, ripped jeans, as long as underwear is not exposed, tank tops, including spaghetti straps, halter tops, and athletic attire. If the dress code is intended to limit inappropriate comments, experiences, and touching in our schools, perhaps a more thoughtful approach is teaching kids about how to speak to one another. Teach kids from the very beginning of their education what it means to be respectful with words and actions, and to listen to each other when words are no, or "please don't treat me like that" are spoken. To take the potential curriculum even further, what if the school district emphasized the legal consequences of sexual harassment? Scare the kids by giving them an honest picture of what these consequences can actually look like. In short, if kids are being harassed, the message from the administrators should not focus on the way the victim was dressed, but rather the wrongness of the behavior. Here's a quote that a student gave to me. "I feel ganged up by my male counterparts and Leslie staff members. I feel like the young men have more power than me. Girls are growing up, and they want to express themselves. As an educational environment, we should encourage how the students want to dress and not shut it down with old dress codes." Women are told that we are distracting; that is treating us like sexual objects. How do you think that makes us feel? One other argument in favor of updating the dress code is the potential misuse of funds. The taxpayers do not pay our teachers to hand down consequences for certain clothing items being worn. Staff at Leslie Middle School spend way too much time making sure we are in line with the dress code. It seems like a waste of taxpayer money and not in line with what most teachers are hired to do. Teachers can burn out easily, and this could be one more burden on their shoulders, another fight to fight with their students. Nobody needs that.
So I'm Shannon Campbell, and I'm Claire's mom and lifelong Salem resident. So, as a parent, I am disheartened by some of the experiences that my daughters have had. I have twin eighth-grade daughters. They have been two of several young women pulled from class and lined up in the hallway to conduct the fingertip test, are the shorts too short. Also, on more than one occasion, a male teacher has told Claire that her bra strap is showing. That just feels inappropriate. Straub Middle School is one of the schools where teachers have recently decided to not enforce every part of the dress code. They're busy enough, with enough pressure placed on them, so they decided to draw a line about what they, the teachers, should be responsible for. I applaud that decision. Another concern are the inconsistencies across the district. Some schools enforce the dress code and others don't. If there's a policy in place within a school district, it seems like it should be followed by all, not just some. An example is just this last week. A boy at a local middle school wore a hoodie with a Playboy symbol on it, and he was not dress-coded. He left wearing the same hoodie at the end of the day. That feels like discrimination. Lastly, I am concerned that my daughters have now been essentially taught that their bodies are sexual distractions. I want them to learn math, history, science, English, how to be respectful, how to work with their peers to accomplish a goal, how to encourage people in the face of hardship. I want them to learn how to manage money. I want them to know who some of the greatest authors of our time are. Instead, there are daily interruptions to that educational experience because somebody has a bra strap showing. The distractions in our schools are too many to count, so can we please do our part to stop the inconsistent enforcement of this dress code and relieve our students of one more interruption in their day? So let's be consistent, appropriate, and treat young women and men equally, and not shame our children. And one other thing I think is worth noting is, a lot of us wore clothes that we would be dress-coded in. I would not be able to wear this at Leslie Middle School. There's holes in my jeans above the knees, and my bra straps show, and my shoulders show. Those are three infractions. So I would either have to call my parents to come and pick me up, or have something from the lost and found put on me, so. And, except for my mom, who is dressed not like the Lesley dress code. Or there you go. But Lucia would be dress-coded, her shoulders are showing, her shorts are too short. Annie would be dress-coded, like the picture at the front of your packet. An eight-year-old little girl was dress-coded at Grant Elementary School and told she was inappropriate because she had a slit down the side of her sleeve. Same here. My daughter's shorts are too short, shorts are too short. Teacher, shorts are too short, shoulders are showing, shorts are too short. So it just needs to be updated, which I know you agree with, because we've already had a small conversation about this, but it's been a frustrating experience as a parent to have my girls come home and feel like they've been sexualized in a place where they should just learn, so, that's it.
We have connected them with Lillian, who's in the process of leading a group of cabinet members around the dress code, so.
So we just want to say thank you for the entire group of you, especially to come and support each other and to be brave and tell us that. So thank you so much. I'm sure your parents are very, very proud of you being here, so, thank you. Okay, I think that is the last of our public comments, so.
Board activities.
Okay, sorry. So, the very last part of our meeting is with regards to our board activities, and as you've heard, we've all been at graduation ceremonies, so it's been incredibly exciting. So does anyone have anything in particular they want to share? So Marty?
Yeah, like all board members, I've had some graduations. I was honored to be able to shake 490 hands at the McKay graduation, and also at Early College High School and their Teen Parent Program. I love the Teen Parent Program and the opportunities we're able to provide to our young parents. Not all young parents have that opportunity. And also, I attended my third Booster Club meeting at McKay, and I'm learning all the things that they do and how they support their students. They volunteer many hours on our students' behalf, and so I just want to give kudos not only in McKay Booster Club, but all the Booster Clubs in our district.
Let's see, I'm trying to think through my head, because it's busy season, but I would say, my weekly mentorship, I mentor a student out at Harret every week. We play some basketball, play some football, hang out with kids, it's fun. It's a good time. And then, and I also recommend that everybody else does the same, just saying. I went to the Roberts graduation, that was great. We had a lot of guests, a lot of speakers there that were students, and the things that these students have overcome and still have been able to graduate, it's incredible. And then I was at the African-American graduation event, which is the first one we've ever had, by the way, and that was awesome. They had the best food. And I was at the Native American graduation. We're probably related to half the people there, but yeah, it was a great time, and that was at the Lamis, that was really cool.
Yeah, it's the graduations. I don't know if Chuck's still on the phone. Okay, Chuck, did you have anything you wanted to share about the, since our last board meeting?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. I just wanted to thank Kristy and the other speakers tonight for the kind words and say how much I've enjoyed working with the current board and past boards over the last 12 years, and wish you all well in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Chuck. Okay, I think that is, oh, I'm sorry, the superintendent's report.
Well, people took mine, so I did want to thank Lillian and the communication team for the graduation work. Also, Sarah and your team for the budget work, and everyone else who's helped us have a very successful school year. Last day for teachers is Friday, last days for kids spread out over the course of this week, and by Monday, we'll have put 2019, or 1819 in the books. So really a heartfelt thank you to our educators who have worked hard this year to get kids across the stage.
I think that does it for this evening, so thank you again for being here. We're adjourned.